Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty virtual work session of the Anarundel County Council. We are now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Rovian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey? Is not here yet. Mr. Pruski is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
And Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith? Was here. Madam Auditor, are you present? Legislative Counsel, Ms. Schuet?
Present.
Okay. Madam Chair, Mr. Pruski is absent for the meeting. Mr. Volkey is currently absent. The auditor is currently absent. Everyone else is present.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please read the Open Meetings Act statement?
And we have captioning, by the way. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held at county seat meeting in Apple's. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID- nineteen emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written public comments to legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and allowing public to call in or appear via Zoom to testify live. The county office of law has opined that the public access provided by this technology makes virtual meetings reasonably accessible to the public as required by the OMA. The Office of Law has also reviewed whether, with these technological features in place, it is still necessary to suspend Rules three one oh five and three one oh six that require public participation and reasonable seating for the public and the media. Their conclusion is that it is not necessary to suspend these rules, for the same reason they have concluded that measures implemented by the council for virtual meetings satisfy the reasonable accessibility requirement under the OMA. The virtual format of the meetings allows public participation and media access as required by the rules, and also allows unlimited participation that is not subject to seat capacity limits in the chambers or in the building. For these reasons, they've concluded that the requirements of Rules three one oh five and three one oh six are being satisfied, and therefore it is not necessary to waive these rules."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Will you please read the ethics statement?
We don't need the ethics statement, Madam Chair, that as there is no public testimony during a work session.
Perfect. Great. We will move into our first agenda item, which is Bill number seventy-five dash twenty. I believe this is a county executive bill. Mr. Barron, are you with us? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the council. I am bringing up notes, sorry. Bill seventy-five twenty is the conveyance of surplus property near Furnace Branch Road in Glenburnee, Maryland. The council may recall Bill fifty dash twenty, which the administration had to withdraw after the auditor identified process issues with how the administration went about the surplus. Bill seventy-five twenty is our second attempt. We believe we have corrected those process issues, and we were bringing that forward. I apologize, it was a little rusty. I forgot to introduce my panel. I have Ms. Romans from Central Services, along with Ms. Harris, and Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. As I mentioned, we have done it correctly this time. The administration apologizes for Bill fifty twenty and the error. To be clear, this property is in Glenburnee, District Two. It's on the corner of Furnace Branch Road and Crane Highway. It was offered for bid in accordance with Article Eight, Section two oh four, for three consecutive weeks on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, through August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, with a minimum bid requirement of a hundred and three thousand dollars. Reliable Real Estate Services LLC submitted a bid in the amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. In accordance with Article Eight, Section two oh four F, an ordinance is required for the sale of property for which the purchase price is less than ninety percent of its appraised value, or is appraised at fifty thousand or more. The council has been provided a map of the surrounding area as a part of the legislative package. If the council approves, Real Estate Division will proceed with disposing of this property in accordance with county code. We are happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time."
Are there any questions about seventy-five dash twenty? Seeing none, we'll move along. We have a... So thank you all for being here this morning, and thank you for getting this one done. Next on our agenda is Bill seventy-six dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill. Mr. Barron?
Thanks again, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. As my virtual table arrives, I'm going to introduce them. We have Mr. Kai Ziegler from Office of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Sheik Nowich from AACPS should be joining us. Don't see him yet. And Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from Office of Law. Bill seventy-six twenty fulfills the requirement in Section seventeen dash five dash five oh two that requires the planning and zoning officer to prepare an annual school utilization chart and submit it to the county council for approval. One thing to identify that's different in seventy-six twenty than previous charts you have seen, we have added a decimal point to help provide a little more clarity on where the schools are. There was some rounding that happened in a previous chart that caused some confusion. So in an effort to be a little clearer, we added a decimal point. This chart is used to evaluate development applications for compliance with adequacy of facilities regulations as it relates to school capacity. The chart is based on enrollments projected by the Board of Education in the most recent educational facilities master plan prepared by the Board of Education, as well as new students generated by new development approved by the Office of Planning and Zoning since the last school utilization chart was approved or updated. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and hopefully the hearing will pass this bill.
Do we have any questions about the school utilization chart, Bill seventy-six dash twenty? Oh, okay. Moving right along. Thank you for joining us, everyone. We're going to hit Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill. Mr. Barron?
Thanks again, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table will be Ms. Carrier from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. Bill seventy-seven twenty allows four properties to connect to public sewer within the Cox Creek Sewer Service Area instead of the Broadneck Sewer Service Area. All of the parcels are currently in the planned sewer service category. The change in this service area boundary was reviewed and supported by OPZ, DPW, IMP, and the Health Department. Happy to answer any questions as it relates to seventy-seven twenty.
Any questions about seventy-seven twenty? Okay, we're on a roll here today. No questions, Mr. Barron? So we're going to move right along to Bill number seventy-eight dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill.
Might need to slow down here. Pete Barron with the administration, and joining me also from the administration is our Deputy CAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. From Office of Planning and Zoning is Mr. Kai Ziegler, and from Office of Law, we should have Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Bill seventy-eight twenty deals with impact fees. Impact, development impact fees are charges paid by the proposed developer to fund the cost of improving real property that serves the development and thereby causing an impact on schools' transportation or public safety. The purpose of seventy-eight twenty is to allow development impact fees to be used to pay for the studies and analyses of the fees periodically required to ensure that the county fee schedule is equitable and not solely for capital improvements for expansion of the capacity of public schools, roads, public safety as set forth under seventeen-eleven-two oh nine. Essentially, what this bill will do is allow for us to use the impact fees to study the appropriate level for impact fees rather than using general fund dollars to conduct that study. Well, we're happy to answer any questions on this bill.
We have our first question of the morning. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. My question is on a practical standpoint about how this works, because the impact fees can only be used within the area that they are so designated. How are we going to choose which areas' impact fees get used to pay for the study? And or are we going to somehow combine them? How's that going to work? Because obviously, the person whose money is funding the study then doesn't have that money to use to increase capacity and things like that.
So I'm going to ask, I believe we're allowed to do this, I'm going to ask if maybe Planning and Zoning knows exactly how they're going to address that concern, or possibly Office of Law.
Sure. This is Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer for Anarundel County. I think with your question, I think I understand it, but we are talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars out of a several million dollar intake in impact fees. And what we would do is, for example, with school impact fees, we have a countywide school district. So school impact fees could be spent anywhere where there is a need. We would pull money out of each of those accounts in a proportional way to the cost of the study.
And Councilwoman Hare, Mr. Teru is also here from Budget, and he just sent me a note that said they are agreed with Mr. Kai Ziegler, and ask him to come forward if he's available, but we're going to prorate it, is the answer.
Morning. Councilman Stephen Thro from Budget, I believe, as Mr. Kai said, and as Mr. Barron just said, we do have a plan to prorate it across all impact fee districts and maybe create a new capital project, so it is evenly distributed, so one impact fee district is not subsidizing for the study.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. Quick question. This is for Mr. Kai Ziegler. Is, did you say thousands of dollars per year are spent from the general fund, or I just want clarification on the average amount spent out of the general fund?
Understand. Steve Kaisner, Planning and Zoning Officer. No, it won't be thousands and thousands of dollars per year. Typically, you would want to update your impact fee program about every five years. We haven't done it since two thousand and nine. An impact fee study for all of the categories that we have in Anarundel County is probably upwards of two hundred thousand, but no more than three hundred thousand. You would spend that amount approximately every five years.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I think that actually answered my questions about the frequency, the cost, and yeah, that covers it.
Ms. Schuet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about how this bill fits in with the current language in the code, which is in seventeen-eleven dash two oh nine, which says that all impact fees that are collected need, must be used to increase the capacity of schools, roads, et cetera. I'm not sure how using the money to pay an expert fits that mandate that's already in the code.
Ms. Blair-Klausmeyer?
Ms. Klausmeyer?
Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I believe you're referring to subsection A of that, of two nine, two oh nine, seventeen-eleven-two oh nine?
Yes.
And that section is being amended to say excepted, set forth in subsection G, and G is the study language, so.
Okay. If I may, Madam Chair, a follow-up question.
Yes.
Hasn't the Supreme Court and other courts ruled that the fees must be used in order to offset the effect of new development?
So I can go back and look at that precisely, but certainly determining how much the fee is, and how much the fee should be. What the courts also say is there has to be a reasonable nexus between the fee and the impact. So studying the impact and making sure you're set the fee seems to be within that mandate, but we can certainly take another look at that and see if there's something that would prevent that.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions regarding Bill seventy-eight dash twenty? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. Just a quick question that came to me. Didn't we fund something like this in the budget last year? I thought we funded an impact fee study or something like that in the budget last year already for Office of Planning and Zoning?
Thank you, Councilman Volkey. I believe, and Mr. Teru can correct me if I'm wrong, as he usually does, the, in the budget, the council approved general funds to fund the study. This would allow the use of impact fees.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. So just to follow up on that, if that's the way that we've traditionally done it, what is the sort of thought process or the impetus for now saying that we need to take this two or three hundred thousand dollars every five years, which really equates to a cost of forty to sixty thousand dollars per year, and pay that out of the impact fee funds as opposed to the general funds?
Are you asking for the policy justification for it?
Or the fiscal, if, you know, if you all have a policy or a fiscal justification, I'd be interested in either one of them or both.
I think it, and I'll let Planning and Zoning add anything, or law. Our view of this is, who should be paying for the study? Should the taxpayers, or should the developers? I mean, that's really what this comes down to. The cost is not prohibitive, but we have not funded, as Mr. Kai Ziegler mentioned, a study on these fees since two thousand and nine as a county. So allowing impact fees to be used for this will make it easier for the county to make those decisions when we're dealing with tight budgets. It's just a different bucket to take out the fees for, the resources for the study, excuse me.
And I would agree. This Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, Mr. Barron said it quite right. The question in my mind is, where should the funds be coming for to pay for a study that relates to impact fees? In my experience in other jurisdictions, I've had a lot of experience with impact fees. We have always been able to use existing collected impact fees to pay for these studies. Frankly, I was a little surprised that we kind of had a clause in our code that did not specifically allow us to do that, and the county's Office of Law opined to that position. So at the time, last spring, we decided to go forward with asking for money in the general fund to pay for the study, but also to pursue legislation that would allow us to fund these studies in the future out of collected impact fees.
Okay. Nathan Volkey, District Three, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I guess the flip side of that argument, Mr. Barron, and I understand your point is, this is money that now no longer is going to be available to fund traffic improvements or school improvements that's been paid by developers. I guess your argument would be, you think you're going to get a bigger bang for your buck if you increase the impact fees, so ultimately, it's a good spend for the taxpayers, and I guess that's a policy question we, as the council, have to decide. But I appreciate the answer. I think that does shed some light on it for me, and I appreciate Mr. Kai Ziegler's experience in other jurisdictions and what that looks like.
I'd agree with that, Councilman, and feel free to work through my arguments yourself all the time.
Do we have any other questions or comments regarding Bill seventy-eight dash twenty at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move ahead to Bill seventy-nine dash twenty. This is both a county executive bill and also co-sponsored by Ms. Hare. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table will be Matt Johnson, our Environmental Policy Director from DPW, Chris Phipps, Karen Henry, and George Heiner from Law, Kelly Kenny. I think everybody is showing up on the Brady Bunch here. Bill seventy-nine twenty eases the bureaucratic burden of a property owner's experience when petitioning the county to connect to public water and sewer. The county created a septic task force composed of citizens to recommend ways to simplify and streamline the petition process in hopes of making petition, more petitions successful. These changes are the result of recommendations provided by the septic task force. To highlight some of the major changes, this bill allows DPW to assist property owners with reconfiguring the petition area without the requirement to start the process over from the beginning. It simplifies the process for the community to accept the self-sustaining rate by allowing the petitioners to vote for the assessment rate in a ballot submitted to DPW, eliminating the need for the rate to be approved by the county council should it exceed the minimum basic rate. It simplifies the process for the county, the counties and the petitioners' approval of the assessment rate. It strengthens the consequences for illegal connections to water or sewer, and it more clearly defines an abandoned project. Thank you to Councilwoman Hare for co-sponsoring this bill. This issue is more complicated, and a lot of work went into this task force from lots of folks, lots of involvement. The team at DPW and Mr. Johnson, along with Councilwoman Hare, have been deeply involved in this issue, and this is one of several bills we have brought forward, and there will be one later on the docket that also comes out of these discussions. And I just want to thank everybody for their assistance, and getting more people off septic is good for our environment. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. This is a pretty complicated one.
Any questions about Bill seventy-nine dash twenty? Ms. Hare?
This isn't so much a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment for anyone who had looked at the petition process before, as the septic task force did in a bit of detail. It was very, very rigid, and if even one item changed, essentially, the process had to start all over again for communities. And as a result, I think communities wear out. They get tired of the process, and so they end up stopping, moving forward on what otherwise was something that was supported by the community. And so the prior legislation we've seen on the sanitary sewer, there's one more bill coming up. We, the septic task force really tried to kind of look holistically at all areas about why are these things not being successful, and how can we help facilitate? So I think the overall goal of this bill, and why I'm so happy to co-sponsor this, is that we're trying to make a working relationship between DPW and the communities, and this gives them the ability to move back and forth in a fluid manner, as opposed to DPW just saying, nope, sorry, you want to change one house that wants to come into the petition or leave the petition, or, you know, one little line, we got to start all over. So that's, that's the goal, at least as I understand it, with this legislation. And it's sort of this and this next bill that's coming up, I think, are really kind of the last couple of puzzle pieces to help this whole process and this whole system work a little better for the county.
Are there any questions for the administration regarding seventy-nine dash twenty? Oh, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I'm not sure who the question is best directed to, but the concern that I have about this idea of being able to change the sort of substance of what's being asked of people midstream is this. If I, as a property owner, have agreed, this is, you know, the particular project I'm going to sign on to, knowing the scope, the size, everything like that, then all of a sudden, that changes somehow administratively down the road, how does that impact my consent? Because at some point, I gave consent for one thing, and now if it has changed into something else, I mean, are we still looking at that as you've consented to any of these changes? I guess my question really is, how big of a change could we be talking about, that a property owner has signed on for one thing, and now it turns into something else? Like, are we talking about one house coming out, or one street changing, or could we be talking about much larger changes than that?
I can probably add to that. Kelly, County Supervising County Attorney. This is actually addressed in thirteen-five-three oh three B of the bill. So that sets forth what happens when the petition area is revised. So it does require a revote on the part of the properties that are added into the area, and also everybody who was in the area to begin with. So those people would have the opportunity to vote, to change their vote from what it was originally. So they will have a say in it if it is changed at all.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions regarding seventy-nine dash twenty? Okay, thank you, everybody. We're going to move ahead to Bill eighty dash twenty. This is Ms. Hare's. Bill, Ms. Hare, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is that other piece that I mentioned. Currently in the bill, the way we do front foot assessments is just how it sounds. You take the literal frontage of a property, and that's how you charge that property for their portion of the connections, all the fees that go into it. So a property that has a lot of road frontage but is small could actually pay a lot more than a large property that has a small amount of road frontage, and it's a really odd sort of way to do it. So one of the things that the septic task force had looked at is, how can we make this a more equitable process for everyone involved, so that you don't see these wild swings in charges for a petition project? And what came out of this was this concept of an equivalent dwelling unit, which is something that's used all the time in other, in other ways. And so each single-family home is equivalent to X equivalent dwelling units, and a commercial property would be equivalent to many more than that. And Mr. Phipps, or actually, probably Ms. Henry, can tell you all of the actual details about, you know, what constitutes one equivalent dwelling unit and how, and how that's calculated. But essentially, this puts everybody on an even playing field, so that each house is paying the same amount because it's being charged on an equivalent dwelling unit basis. And so the legislative summary does a very good job in describing kind of why this is the way to do it and how we came about to this. And I feel like I'm doing a terrible job of explaining it, but that's essentially the basis. We're trying to make this an equitable, an equitable way to go about petition projects as opposed to the way the code currently does it, which allows for these wild swings in the code.
Madam Auditor? You're muted.
Oh, there. Sorry. I usually hold my questions, but I did have one question that I thought might be...
Oh, there. Sorry. I usually hold my questions, but I did have one question that I thought might be helpful. With the equivalent dwelling units that we use in other times, a lot of times, you know, it's an estimate because they haven't hooked up or anything like that yet to actually know their usage. And for the council's sake, an equivalent dwelling unit is like two hundred and fifty units or something like that of waters. So how is it going to work? I know in some of the other sections, if you later determine that the equivalent dwelling unit is off or it should be something different, there's a mechanism to correct it. I know with this, you're connecting, you know, a lot of people and everybody's bill for that connection or that front foot assessment or assessment now, you know, is connected because it's supposed to be the total cost for everybody is supposed to cover the cost. So how how will that be handled? Or if I'm missing something, let me know.
Yeah, let me try. So the basis of the equivalent dwelling unit is to normalize like non-residential properties into what we call equivalent dwelling units. So a restaurant with, you know, a number of seats, say a hundred seats, or let's use a hotel. Hotels are assessed at a hundred and twenty gallons per room. So if you had, you know, the twenty-five, so if you do the assessment, they come up with twenty-five hundred gallons for that hotel, you divide that by two-fifty, so that's ten equivalent dwelling units. So that hotel that generates twenty-five hundred gallons of use is equivalent to ten residential homes. So that's the basis of the EDU. The reason we're using it here is that as a most of these projects are going to be residential. They're not going to be, there's not going to be a whole lot, if any, commercial mixed in. So what you're buying is capacity. You're buying two hundred and fifty gallons of capacity in the county system. So that's instead of, you know, by using the front foot assessment, you know, the 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 average front foot is like a hundred and thirty-one linear feet. So if you have somebody with eighty feet of front footage and a and a wide or long side boundary, they they would be paying a lot less than somebody who has two hundred feet of front foot and a short side boundary. So me me meaning they were the same lot size. And the the basis is they're really buying the same thing, which is one unit of capacity in the county system, two hundred and fifty gallons a day. If they are using, if down the road, some a residential property starts using more than that because they irrigate a lot or they've got other things going on, we have what's called a capital, a capital facility connection recoupment fee. So after a certain, after they've used more than a certain flow, it's, I don't know, maybe it's three hundred and twenty-five gallons on average, then they start to pay more for their usage to so that the county can recover from the capital side, that additional use that they didn't pay for originally. So I I hope that answers the question. There is a mechanism for recovery on those costs if someone's using a lot more.
So if if, so if you've done the assessment and everybody's paying their assessment, and let's say it's all houses, so they're all paying the one equivalent dwelling unit, and you find that somebody is using three hundred, are you saying it will be made up with just the recoupment, not reassessing?
Right, because, right, because we're using the assessment to to divvy up the capital cost to to extend the infrastructure. So we're paying back the cost of that infrastructure. That doesn't change over time. And so just the fact that they've got one EDU, that's the denominator, divided into the numerator, which is the total cost of the project, those numbers won't change once it's done. What could change is if their usage goes up down the road, and then they're going to be assessed a recoupment fee, which really pays for our usage, you know, to for capital facility connection charges. They're using more capacity than than they bought. But it doesn't change the equation for how we assess the costs of the infrastructure that was installed to serve that that community.
Okay, yeah, that helps. So so however you set the EDUs at that assessment, that's going to be what their assessment is. That won't change if usage is different. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Phipps. That was much clearer than I was.
Did the administration have anything else to add about Bill eighty-twenty?
We'll just have Mr. Phipps explain all of these bills.
Okay, okay. Do we have any other questions for Bill eighty-twenty? No, seeing none, we're going to move along to Bill number eighty-one dash twenty. Ms. Radvian, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lisa Radvian, District Six. This bill is a very simple bill that would simply add cottage food businesses to our list of home occupations acceptable under conditional use under our code.
Do we have any questions about Bill eighty-one dash twenty? It is a very quiet Tuesday morning. Okay, did the administration want to add anything about Bill eighty-one dash twenty?
Thanks, Madam Chair, Pete Baron with the administration. The administration supports this bill.
Okay, we will move along to Bill eighty-two dash twenty. Ms. Fiedler, Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Currently, under our code, rifle pistols, skeet and archery ranges indoors are allowed as a special exception in C-three and C-four. The requirements under the special exception are to have a the facility be located on a lot of at least one acre, that they may not draw vehicular traffic to or through local roads and surrounding residential areas. The facility may not be located within four hundred feet, which this bill would adjust, and separate vehicular access shall be provided that are at least fifty feet apart and at least fifty feet from any road intersections, which is slightly adjusted in this bill. And there is no alcoholic beverages permitted to be on sale for consumption on the location. There are currently two indoor gun ranges in Anaronda County and roughly fifteen ammunition and firearm sales retail businesses. Several months ago, I had a constituent who has a business in the fifth district come to me. She has a education facility where she trains folks who are interested in purchasing a firearm under state law. She trains them from beginning to the very end, with the exception of the actual handling of the firearms. She is not able to do that in her current retail location because she does not have the ability to have an indoor range, except that she was able to find a company that essentially prefabs trailer portion, if you will, of a tractor trailer, and then delivers it to a retail location. They install it through a delivery or garage door in the back of the location, and it hooks up to their HVAC system. And initially, what was an empty space then becomes an indoor gun range with no building taking place. The only snag right now for her is that she's located closer than the four hundred feet proximity. It has created some some concerns within her clientele that they work from the very beginning with an individual or a trainer in her business, and then at the very end have to be sent to another location in the county. I initially worked with planning and zoning on some other drafts of this legislation and ultimately ended up here keeping it special exception so that the communities surrounding any potential locations would still have the opportunity to weigh in. And I'm happy to take any questions or yield to Mr. Volk if he wants to add any comments.
Are there any questions about Bill eighty-two dash twenty? Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. Perhaps Ms. Fiedler, could could you expand upon the second part of the bill with the fifty feet to a to vehicular access or to a road? I I understand the first part, but I just don't quite understand why the second part is needed.
So we actually are removing some of the language that it doesn't have to have to to enter an enter and an exit. There can be one. In talking with planning and zoning, that was originally put into our code for a reason that fit that, an initial business that no longer really applies to our code today and and how we make decisions on road infrastructure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Sarah Lacy, District One. Did you have any separate review from of the bill from the fire marshal or fire department or anybody else, emergency services who need access? I mean, is that a factor at all in the citing of this kind of business?
Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I did not reach out to the fire marshal or fire department. They the particular location in question is actually very close to headquarters, but they would still be subject to all of the laws that and capacity of fire marshal inspection that are currently law. I don't know what questions I would necessarily ask with regard to access. They they still have the same access that they have currently to the commercial location. And I see Ms. Schuett is.
Ms. Schuett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Linda Schuett, Legislative Attorney. I did a search through the code for access requirements, and there are, I'm going to say, no other uses that require a dual dual entrances and exits. I could be wrong about that. There might be one or two, but I'm sure Ms. Say could answer this more clearly. But I think changing the bill or changing the law so that only one access is required is way more the norm than having two. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Since when we change the code for land use, we change it countywide, was there any consideration of the the constituent seeking a variance to the current code for their location before we look at changing the entire county code?
Amanda Fiedler, District Five. The current location for this particular business, they've been in that location for several years. There are only a fif- roughly fifteen, based on a quick search that I did, ammunition and firearm sales retailers in the entire county of that fifteen. Only one other one has an indoor gun range, so I don't know that variance would be the most appropriate way to go. I chose to just adjust the distance from location to residential outline considering that the there are limited locations, and it is very difficult to open one of these shops.
I'm going to just follow up, Ms. Schuett. Well, Ms. Schuett, go ahead.
Thank you. The the variance procedure could have potentially worked for the setback from a residential dwelling, but it can't work for having to, I mean, this this is a this particular development has been there for a long time, which would probably be true of most development throughout the county, and there's only one access. It was the whole, I don't even think it's possible to get a second access on that particular on on this project and perhaps most.
Thank you. My my concern about the variance was was mainly about the reducing the the setback to a residential area. I know that in drafting legislation regarding medical cannabis dispensaries, it was quite concerning the setback to residential areas. And just recently, a dispensary sought a a variance to lessen that setback, and it was granted. I seem to recall that being, I just think that not necessarily for the road access, I was referring mainly the, I'm concerned that if we change it in the code, we we're going to have residential areas that might not appreciate the reduction in that setback. But this, I understand, I know exactly where this location is, and I'm not saying this isn't an appropriate location, but we're changing the code countywide, so I think it's important to take that into consideration. Not that I'm the hearing officer, and I couldn't guarantee, obviously, the granting of a variance, but it does seem like a a way to go for that part of this bill.
Ms. Fiedler.
This was a discussion that I've had at length, both with planning and zoning and the constituent, and changing the distance and keeping it special exception was where we all landed. I can't speak on behalf of planning and zoning, but I did work closely with them on this and wanted to also honor the requests of the business owner, who has been trying to get this used for two years. So I will yield my comments to my colleague.
I'm going to let Ms. Ms. Mr. Baron, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Baron with the administration. I'll I'll echo a a couple of things. First, though, I do want to thank the sponsor for for working with us. As as she mentioned, the original draft of the bill, we had some serious concern about the removal of the public participation and and keeping it special exception definitely makes it more palatable. However, the administration does still have some concerns, particularly, and I think Madam Chair said it very well, is this particular business, it seems like it works, but we are changing the code countywide, and removing the setback from a residential community does concern the administration. I I would, I think, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. I think the the road change does make some sense, and and we don't share those concerns as as much as we do about the proximity to a residential dwell, a residential outline.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. I I have no problem with the road access change either. That's why I wanted to ask my question, just to be clear that I didn't have a problem with it. But I am not sure that I agree yet with a countywide change. And I I wonder if, I just think we need to think carefully about whether, you know, in application for a variance, there's still going to be some kind of hearing and, you know, notice to the community. A special exception will be also, and maybe to the a a community that would be, you know, within a hundred feet, maybe as long as functionally it's the same, they have notice and an opportunity to be heard about about the application, then, you know, then you may say, well, that's just two functionally equivalent methods of getting to the same result, and that may be okay. I I don't know whether we would necessarily agree with that in general that a variance and a special exception would be the same as far as the effort and time and money put into obtaining approval under either route. But my concern is more that either way, some sort of special consideration needs to be given to the distances. I think because each each site is going to be so specific, and clearly, the northernmost parts of the county are far more dense in their, you know, population and residences than than even in Millersville. So I wonder if maybe there isn't a way to rewrite that, the first part of reducing from four hundred down to a hundred feet to say, to put in, you know, some sort of condition based on, say, neighboring the neighboring conditions, types of, you know, is it next to R-one or is it next to, you know, R-twenty-two? I don't know. But maybe something like that would be a useful criteria to think about how this might apply across the rest of the county.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler. And Councilwoman Lacy, I just wanted to thank you for that feedback. As Mr. Baron mentioned, when I initially started working on this bill, I was discussing conditional use in C-four, and then it it was adjusted several times because I do understand that there is necessary uh, necessary conversations that have to happen from the surrounding community and the residents. Uh, the way that the bill is written now and just looking at the map, um, there are, there are no locations currently that are ammunition, uh, sales locations or that are currently existing as an indoor rifle, um, range that are in close proximity to a high-density residential area. They're either four hundred feet or more apart, or they are surrounded by commercial space. Um, or they are located, um, too close to a highly residential area. I'm talking like forty-three feet. So, um, I did have a question and this may address some of your concerns, um, Ms. Lacy, that if planning and zoning could share how they would measure the, would it be lot line to lot line or door of business to residential lot line?
I think Ms. Say might be able to take that when she unmutes.
So Sterling Say, Planning and Zoning, uh, Zoning Division. Um, the, the way we would measure that, I believe the, the, uh, let me look at the legislation. Is it based on facility? If it's facility, we usually do it lot line to lot line.
Thank you.
Uh, if, excuse me, if the bill had said structure, we would do it from the building itself to the lot line of the residential district. So it depends on facility versus structure. This, I think, is based on facility, which would be the entire property.
Uh, Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Schuet, you had had your flag raised earlier and I think I skipped over you.
Thank you. I think this was already somewhat raised, but, uh, the law was recently changed with respect to the setback uh, for residential stuff for pawn shops and it, um, answer whether, it appears that these setbacks for residential structures may have been uh, adopted a very long time ago, or, I mean, it, what, how do you go about deciding what the appropriate setback is?
Anyone?
Who sent a question to the administration? And ask Ms. Say from Planning and Zoning to, to try to enlighten us.
Most of these have already been codified for us, the setbacks, but what we look at is the impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Is this a use that would impact it and does it need to have a distance? I don't know if that helps or not, but it's impact.
A follow-up question, if I may? I'm sorry.
Ms. Schuet, yes, of course.
Uh, so if the, if it were required that the indoor uh, shooting range be soundproof, would that alter your effect, your, your decision about what the impact on a residential structure might be?
Uh, yes, I'm, I believe in, for the, uh, shooting range, the impact would be noise-related. I don't see any other impacts associated with the use.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just a follow-up comment to that conversation. So one of the two indoor gun ranges, shooting ranges in the county right now is located in a commercial strip facility location. Um, and I have not to date heard of any neighboring businesses in that strip who have complained about, uh, the noise.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so I, I understand the concerns that everybody has about noise, but if any of you have ever gone to On Target and actually shot in the indoor range there, um, as I have, which On Target is out by Fort Meade, uh, it is a commercial shopping center. You, you can't hear anything. Like, y- you walk outside, you don't hear the range inside. So I guess my question would be for planning and zoning, are there already restrictions or already regulations at either the state or the federal level? In addition to what we have in the county code that allows where you can place one of these shops, uh, or one of these facilities that provide for soundproofing? Um, because, you know, as I said, I've been there. I've actually been to these ranges. Um, I know what it's like and you don't hear it. So I understand the concern and I can respect that the community would be worried about that. I think that's legitimate. And if we find that those restrictions are not here, maybe that is something we need to consider. But I, I can tell you that in my experience, um, you're not hearing the range when you're outside of the range. So if planning and zoning can add anything on that as to either local, state or federal regulations that require that an indoor gun range, uh, mitigate their noise and, and whatever, uh, sort of sound they're making, I'd appreciate it.
I don't have any information on that and I will certainly look into it. I don't know if law has anything on that.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I don't have that information offhand, but I can certainly, um, ask somebody to research that and get back to you.
Great. Thank you very much. And if any of my colleagues would like to go to On Target with me, let me know and we can set up a trip.
Maybe the only way I can get you to talk to me, Mr. Volkey. I, I do want to, I do want to point out that setbacks and from residential areas and things like that, um, they do, they, they are not always based in any sort of rationale except public opinion. Noted the, the hard work I had to do on medical cannabis dispensaries. You know, we can have a CVS anywhere in the county, but a medical cannabis dispensary is somehow needs to be five hundred feet from this. And, you know, there's a lot of provisions around it based on public perception of what that means for a community. So noise, safety, I don't know, maybe a neighborhood would rather not be, uh, have a, a gun range tucked in, into it. I don't know, but it isn't always just about, um, um, there's a perception too, correct? Which is why we, we get to do all the hard work here in conversation. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just want to follow up on that comment. Amanda Fiedler, District Five, and I certainly have not looked in depth across the county, but, um, I have not been able to identify C3 and C4 locations that are in the center of communities. They're all kind of on the outer, uh, edges or on major, uh, traffic routes. Um, so just for clarification.
Sure. Are we, um, winding up eighty-two twenty here? We ready to move on? Uh, the next, uh, bill is number eighty-three twenty. Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Bill eighty-three twenty is in large measure the same as Bill forty-one twenty, which we discussed extensively back in March. Uh, the only difference is the date of termination. Instead of setting a date certain, it sets a time after, uh, the legislation passes. Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions? The administration want to weigh in on Bill eighty-three twenty at this time?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me, uh, is, uh, Chris Trumbauer, our um, Policy Communications Director, uh, and Craig Swain from the Office of Law, the administration is opposed to this bill.
Do we have any questions, my colleagues, for the sponsor of eighty-three twenty? Seeing none? We'll save them for the big show next week, maybe? I don't see any questions of my colleagues. I don't have any at this time. Uh, we'll move on to Bill number eighty-four dash twenty. This is a county executive bill. Uh, Mr. Baron.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Pete Baron with the administration. Uh, eighty-four twenty, um, is the, uh, Board of Ed, uh, transfer bill. Joining me from Budget is Mr. Teru uh, from AACPS, Mr. Sheknovich and Mr. Stansky. Uh, and from law, uh, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Bill eighty-four twenty recognizes a little over twenty-nine million dollars of additional federal and state grants to the Board of Education and increases the appropriations allocated by these grants. Uh, Mr. Sheknovich and Mr. Stansky are here, uh, with any detail and questions, uh, and to here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the virtual table on Bill eighty-four dash twenty? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three, um, for AACPS. So the grants that look to be realized are largely associated with, uh, COVID funding, both at the state and the federal level. Am I reading that correctly as to the source of the funds?
That is correct. Alachek Novich, Chief Operating Officer. Uh, all of these funds are one hundred percent related uh, to COVID activities and are monies that are being distributed uh, by the federal government through the state as a pass-through entity to the lo- uh, twenty-four localities.
Okay, thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again, just to follow up on that question to make sure I'm clear. What if any, which if any of these grants, uh, or other funds that were received, um, were contingent upon the county operating under a state of emergency uh, or declaring some sort of civil emergency in order to obtain the funds?
Alachek Novich, uh, Chief Operating Officer, Enron County Public Schools. Uh, these were, to the best of my knowledge, the answer to that is none. Uh, they were contingent upon, uh, the governor's executive orders. So all, none of these, uh, funds, uh, Councilman Volkey came directly to Enron County Public Schools. They all went through the state and the state entity as the governing authority and therefore it would be under the, uh, statewide governor's executive orders. None of them, to the best of my knowledge, are contingent upon any local declaration. They're all statewide and federal, federal-wide contingencies.
Great. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions about Bill eighty-four dash twenty? Seeing none? Thank you for joining us today. We'll be, uh, moving on to Bill eighty-five dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill.
Sorry. Uh, Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me from, uh, the DPW is Ms. Henry and Mr. Biggerstaff, uh, from Finance, Ms. McQuaid, uh, from Law, Ms. Kenny. Bill eighty-five twenty, uh, eliminates the user connection charge, which removes uh, the option to connect to public water or sewer under a contract administered by the Department of Public Works. The bill replaces that process with the new TAP connection permit or requirement for a public works agreement. Uh, the TAP permit process will save property owners money through lower construction costs and faster completion time. Uh, the current process requires the county, uh, to contract with a utility contractor and then the county serves as the general contractor for connecting the property to county water and sewer. Because each connection is unique, general pricing is often impractical and not accurate. As a result, the county's contract pricing is not competitive. To save money, property owners are using the, uh, public works agreement, the PWA alternative more often and the county, then the county's, uh, contracted connection process. The PWA requires engineering design and can take more time, but the pricing is still coming in lower than the private connection. Uh, the new TAP permit process would provide property owners under certain conditions uh, that do not require PWA, an alternative to the PWA, and less costly than current private connection processes. Uh, in this new process, the property owner controls the hiring of their own licensed utility contractor. Uh, they would pay a, a annual, uh, a fee of two-twenty-five, which has annual CPI adjustments. The fee covers the county's administration, administrative costs for construction, inspection, DPW engineering review, financial services and management of the process. DPW and inspections and permits would provide property owners with a list of approved county licensed utility contractors who have been certified to perform connection work. The contractors would be required to provide an annual bond security in the event there are any issues with the connection installed by the contractor. Uh, with that, uh, the experts here at DPW or Finance, um, are, are happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, Mr. Baron or anybody at the table, um, how did you all settle on the definition of CPI on page three? Cause we've used in different bills, a number of different measures, not always for CPI, so that wouldn't be fair to say that's the number, uh, or that's the definition, but I'm just curious how you chose to pick the all-urban consumers for the U.S. as the CPI in a little, looking at something maybe a little more local.
I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. McQuaid or Ms. Kenny, uh, who drafted the bill to, to weigh in on that particular choice.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I believe that that is the definition that is used elsewhere in the code. There's a couple other places in Article thirteen, um, where CPI is used and that's the same definition that's used there as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hair. Um, Ms. Kenny, just following up on Councilman Volkey's question, I thought for the other sanitary sewer, uh, bills we had done earlier in terms of the deferral and stuff like that, weren't we looking at Baltimore? Um, a- as there, um, is that sort of measurement?
I'd have to look back and see what the other definitions are and I can, I can get back to you on that. I don't have those right in front of me, so I cannot remember every place where it appears in the code to pull out the, the definitions. I, I thought they were all the same, but I will certainly double check that.
Um, if, if Mr. Teru is still available, could, um, the administrator pull him in? He has, uh, some, uh, as usual, something enlightening to say about the selection of, uh, the CPI language. I see him, but no video. There you are.
Morning again. Councilperson Steven Thro from the Budget Office. Um, I believe the local indexes for CPI have been discontinued, at least from an annual publishing standpoint. So for the property tax, for example, when we calculate the tax cap rate, we actually use the national index now because the, um, local indexes are no longer published on an annual basis. Additionally, the national average does not fluctuate quite as vol- volatile as the national index because it's just a broader range measure.
Any other questions regarding Bill eighty-five dash twenty? Seeing none, we'll move to Bill eighty-six dash twenty. Uh, Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Am I muted again? No. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table will be, uh, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. Uh, from OPZ, Ms. Courtney Wilson, from Law, Ms. Kinley Bray. Uh, the purpose of eighty-six twenty is to amend procedural plan review timelines, allowing additional time for the applicant to prepare their applications, which will reduce the number of time extension modification requests that add cost to development and strain on staff resources. It also amends requirements for site development plans to be consistent with sketch and final site plan checklist requirements as determined by impacting review agencies instead of listing site plan criteria individually in the code. Finally, it adds an exemption under Title Four Site Development Plan for low-impact uses that are either temporary, lasting no more than a day, with no permanent changes to land, uh, codified uses that have been exempt by policy based on limited thresholds or are protected by state law. Uh, this is a big bill and, and we're happy to answer any questions and, uh,
Thank you. Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Baron, if the goal is to try and have fewer modification requests, why is it that we are shortening the number of time extensions? why is it that we are shortening the number of time extensions you can ask for before you need a modification?
I'm going to ask Ms. Rhodes or Ms. Wilson, possibly, to enlighten us on that question.
Good morning. I'm quite, Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I'm quite sure Courtney Wilson probably could speak to this more articulately than I could, because what they did is they increased the times for reviews to decrease the number of modifications that developers seek for those processes. So, basically, this bill is allowing them more time to decrease the number of modifications. But I'll ask Courtney Wilson to explain, since she actually deals with these processes more than I do.
Hi, thank you. Courtney Wilson, Office of Planning and Zoning. You're correct, there are two separate things going on in this bill. One is we've extended the completion times and resubmital times to eliminate a lot of these time extension modifications we get. But what we also did was eliminated, there's a, an administrative time extension allowance in this section of the code, and it allowed originally for a hundred-and-eighty-day time extension, a hundred-and-twenty-day time extension, and a third and final sixty-day time extension for a total of one year. Our planners are just writing three letters back-to-back. So, we've reduced that down to a hundred-and-eighty-day time extension, which can be granted by the planning administrator, and then another hundred-and-eighty-day time extension, which would be granted with adequate justification by the planning and zoning officer. So, we've eliminated quite a few time extension modifications, and we're eliminating at least one of the three administrative time extensions we continue to get. I would say almost a hundred percent of these time extensions are usually approved. So, it's just a redundancy we're trying to eliminate here.
Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Nathan Volkey, District Three. So, it sounds like you're giving them the exact same time. You're just taking a step out, but you're now making the second extension required to be justified with adequate justification and approved by the planning administrator, as opposed to what sounds like you were indicating was almost an automatic extension. So, it really sounds like you're knocking a hundred-and-eighty days off of the process for the developer unless they can prove to the satisfaction of the planning administrator that it's justified. Am I capturing this correctly?
For the administrative time extension process right now, you get an automatic hundred-and-eighty-day approval without justification, and that's granted by the planning administrator. Then you have two more chances, a hundred-and-twenty day, and then your third is a sixty day. Those two need justification. So, really, we've just combined the hundred-and-twenty day and the sixty day into one, which needs justification still.
Okay, so Nathan Volkey, District Three, following up. So, I think you had said that, for practical purposes, a hundred percent of these time modifications are being granted. Did I hear that correctly?
Almost a hundred percent. There are some rare occasions where we just cannot continue to extend time extensions, such as when APF is an issue or concern for a specific project. But that's rare.
Okay, so then, so then if it's nearly an automatic grant of additional time, do you expect that this new hundred-and-eighty-day window, you've got the first one-eighty, and then you're going to have the second, do you expect the second one-eighty is going to be nearly an automatic grant of a time extension by the planning administrator?
It's anticipated. I don't foresee why we would deny it. The whole purpose is to allow some more flexibility. As you know, folks have a lot going on. Right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so there are issues there. You know, we hear things, deaths in the family, new consultants. There's just a gambit of issues that developers need to work through, and sometimes, you know, the standard one-year or whatever time extension is necessary is not enough. Maybe there are APF issues they have to work through mitigation, they have to resolve with other agencies. There's a lot that goes into it, and sometimes they just need more time. And for our planners to continue to write these letters over and over again, we just really wanted to consolidate the process a little bit.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. The code is also constructed that we have to have a process that developers understand, but we also have to have a process that the property owners can understand, that we have to draw a line at some point on these time extensions. You read the code, you follow the law, you submit your application. We give you reasonable amount of time to reach that point of approval. And then at some point, we have to say, you've had enough time to get this application through the process. So, it's an expectation to provide that clarity for the developer, but also to let the property owner know that there is a time expectancy where that project should be approved or denied.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thank you for those answers. I'm still completely confused as to how this makes any practical difference other than you have less flexibility, because now, instead of getting the chance to give three and tightening up the process and making it shorter window, you're now only going to have two, and somehow, you're telling me that the time extension is going to be automatically granted. So, it seems like a distinction without a difference, and I'm not really sure what the purpose is. So, I think I'm missing something here, but as I said the other night, I'm not sure I'm going to get more information right now. So, thank you for that.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to jump to Section seventeen-three-three oh four for a moment. At the, in paragraph A, you're removing twelve months and inserting eighteen months. So, it sounds like a developer or a person submitting a plan is getting a little bit more time. But then, in Section E of that same paragraph, it still discusses twelve months. Is that an error, and that needs to be eighteen months? Because the two paragraphs don't seem to jive to me.
Sorry, I missed the site, Councilwoman.
Seventeen-three-three oh four. It's the completion of a subdivision. The paragraph A says, within eighteen months, you're taking out the twelve and inserting eighteen. Within eighteen months after the date of approval of a final plan, a developer shall do the following. But then paragraph E says, effective failure to meet the time requirement, and the effective failure to meet that time requirement still references back to twelve months as opposed to eighteen months. Is that just an oversight? Or is there something I'm missing where those two paragraphs don't work in tandem?
Kinley Bray.
I have to go back and take a...
If I could just answer, Kinley Bray, Office of Law. I believe that's just an oversight. I think the intention was to update that to eighteen months as well. Certainly, it's referring back to Section A. So, that's a good catch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. May I ask one follow-up question with the same section?
Of course.
Thank you. Jessica Hare, District Seven. On that last sentence that we're adding into Section E, I'm curious why the policy position that essentially, if you don't meet the eighteen-month deadline, all of the past work that may have been approved is now gone. I would think, we want people to get things right. We want them to do the right thing. We want them to, you know, have sustainable, good neighbor type of plans. And I would think that if you want that to happen, and you want them to get to that final plan that's good, and everybody's on board with it, why you would go back and erase and void out prior approved work rather than trying to help facilitate the appropriate final plan?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I would have to defer to Courtney Wilson, since she deals with all the intricacies of these reviews. Again, it's setting expectations and understandings of what the time limits are, and that at some point, you have to draw a line that there needs to be an expiration. But I'll let her explain the completion of subdivision.
Thank you, Lori, but I'm going to have to kick this can over to Kinley. She was on this one with Lori Allen.
I was expecting that. Thank you, Courtney. So, again, Kinley Bray, Office of Law. The reason for that is actually what Lori Allen, who is our planning administrator, pointed out to us, and we've seen it in a couple of different situations, is a developer trying to revive a sketch plan that has been approved years and years before the expiration of this twelve-month requirement for completion of a subdivision. So, for example, a sketch plan is approved, the entire amount of time of the validity of the sketch plan runs on the last day. They file an application to, for final plan. They then allow all of that time to run. You may have APF approvals that are expiring. You may have other issues, code changes. And we looked at whether it made sense to insert, say, a date certain instead of just wiping out all the underlying approvals. If you look at the site development plan and application process, I think the intent is that it be complete within a total of six years. For example, but in this particular case, what we're trying to avoid is a developer allowing essentially a dormant plan to be revived based on a sketch plan approval that is not co-synchronous, not, not based in the current state of affairs and may have been approved many, many years earlier. So, at this point, the effect of a failure to meet the time requirement, that's at the very end of the subdivision process. The idea is you've got to keep everything alive. You can't allow something to expire and then expect to start over, but bootstrap and approval.
Jessica Hare, District Seven, just to understand, though, if there are code changes and things like that in the meantime, given that Maryland is a late vesting state, any future work that they do would still be subject to the updated codes and things like that? Correct?
They may be with respect to the final plan application, but not necessarily the sketch plan application. So, what we're seeing is that developers are trying to come back and say, well, you approved the sketch plan approval seven, eight years ago, and I can't speak to specific code changes that might have, might have come into play. That's less a concern than simply the lapse in time from the last time that the subdivision was fully considered. And the bigger concern is APF, to be honest with you.
And how long does that take to expire?
Well, we're adjusting the APF to be consistent with this. So, typically, your max time period for, for this, I think Courtney probably could, I don't want to misspeak, but Courtney can give a typical timeframe and the maximum APF approval.
Sure, Courtney Wilson, Office of Planning and Zoning. APF, once vested, remains vested for as long as the life of your project, so long as you keep your project active. So, if you've got time extensions, your APF gets extended. What this change would do is void all prior approvals. So, your APF would no longer be vested. With an SDP, you can only keep a site development plan alive for six years. With sketch and final, it just depends on how long the project remains active. It's a multi-phase project. You've got special agreements that are processed for APF extensions. So, there is no general limit, so long as you keep your project active and alive.
Okay, maybe this is less of a question. I'm just, I'm struggling to understand why it matters. If a, if a developer has to meet, or anyone has to meet the current code and the current whatnot, and they, they sit on it for a while and then come back later, it sounds like this is trying to clear sort of projects that have sat. But I don't, I'm not really understanding the rationale for why, why it matters. Why do we care if someone lets something sit for two years and then brings it back if they still have to meet updated code, updated requirements, and we already accounted for the adequate public facilities that they had to meet? Because those seats in the school are held and things like that. So, I mean, when they vest, right, they hold those seats. So, I'm just, I'm trying to find out, other than we'd like to clear some old projects off the backlog, where we're really getting anything different by letting somebody go two years or instead of eighteen months? Or how we figured out even eighteen months is the appropriate timeframe?
Kelly, do you want to maybe add, provide an example of what prompted this change?
Sure, we had a developer whose project was, was, I believe, dormant for something like twelve years. And the developer recently contacted the Office of Planning and Zoning and sought to revive their sketch approval. And not only was, in my understanding, that the sketch approval, you know, hadn't been looked at by anybody at the Office of Planning and Zoning for that time period, but also, the developer had never even moved toward completion of subdivision. So, the final plot, final plan, I don't believe the final plan was actually ever approved. So, they, you end up with a situation where a developer can go through, or a property owner can go through the final plan approval process and not get a satisfactory approval from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and yet, not get denied, because their time to respond to comments may still be open. They can drop their plan entirely and then come back years later and say, but you approved the concept in sketch. I want to revive the final plan. And they essentially get another bite at the apple. There's no requirement that they submit anything different. So, what, it ends up, from our understanding, what prompted this is sort of the endless loop of comments that might come from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and would require them really to stop that loop by issuing a denial, which would then be appealed in most cases. So, the idea of this bill is that we are extending the timeframe for developers to adequately address all of the comments that are made by the Office of Planning and Zoning without the need for time extensions, and that the developers will be held to those timeframes to complete their applications. The modification process still exists if someone wishes to, to argue that their sketch plan should not be voided. If there's truly good cause and the purposes of the code are fulfilled, they can make that argument under seventeen-two-one oh eight.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hewitt?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about site development. There, the first question is that the existing exemptions in the code under seventeen-four-one oh one have been moved to a new subsection. And I get that, and some things have been added to it. But all of these exemptions that are set forth in one oh one B apply to both the site development plan and the preliminary plan, right?
Which section was that?
Seventeen-four-one oh one B.
Correct.
Okay, so, for example, if you are under ten, if you're doing something that only adds a cumulative amount of impervious surface of no more than five thousand square feet, and you're not in a critical area or in a bog area, then if that's all you're doing, you're exempt from doing both a site development plan and a preliminary plan, right?
That's correct.
That's how it's written.
Thank you. And then, in seven, it says, a permit relating to improvements that do not result in leasable space. I looked for a definition. I'm not sure whether there's one in the building code or not, but I couldn't find a definition for leasable space. I did Google it, and I've seen that there are various ways to calculate leasable space. So, I'm wondering how that particular provision will be implemented.
Courtney Wilson, Office of Planning and Zoning. We have been struggling with this term for many years. The leasable space criteria is in the existing scope that we've reconfigured. So, that's always been in here. And how we look at that is when we review commercial developments, usually with the SDP and preliminary plan process. And really, it's any expansion of floor area, because we cannot make a determination as to whether or not you're going to end up leasing certain space, reconfiguring interior space with future tenants. So, it's really any expansion of commercial floor area. But every time we try to... But every time we tried to define it or spell it out specifically, there was always some hiccup that came up.
Then in a, kind of in a similar vein, under two oh one. It says an application for minor expansion, expansion of floor area, what does minor mean?
The way this is going to be interpreted is if. Irregardless of your disturbing ground or your expanding floor area, if it's less than, if it results in less than five thousand square feet. Then you would be exempt.
So in other words, minor is defined by the amount of the disturbance? Anything that's under the cumulative limited, limit of disturbance of less than five thousand square feet would be considered to be minor?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm not sure I understand the relationship between ten under the exemptions. And A one under two oh one. Under the exemption, it's a cumulative increase of impervious surface of no more than five thousand square feet. But in A one under preliminary plan, it's a. Expansion of floor area or other stuff. For which the proposed cumulative limit of disturbance is less than five thousand square feet, I'm not understanding. What? Why we use limit of disturbance here, but a cumulative increase. I, I just don't, I don't understand how they jive.
I can answer seventeen four two oh one. A one. The purpose of that is because this is to eliminate the preliminary plan process and the preliminary plan process. Is what we use to meet the state mandated three-step environmental site design stormwater criteria. You need a concept plan and then you need your site development plan and then you proceed to your grading permit. When you're disturbing five thousand square feet or less, you do not need to address storm drainage APF and stormwater management. Which means you do not need a concept plan, okay? I'm going to let Lori Rhodes respond regarding the exemption number ten.
Thank you, Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. Because we were trying to actually provide opportunities for the agricultural community. In relation to the agricultural bills that were discussed in the last council meeting. That was one of the things we were considering to allow additional impervious surface, providing it was. No more than five thousand square feet, so that's where that exemption came from. It was more to support some of the agricultural uses based on their needs and not having to go through. The site development process for, for projects that were very small in nature, less than fifteen events. Small farm buildings, so that's kind of where the genesis of that five thousand square feet came from.
I still don't understand how they jive, but I'd certainly be willing to talk about that offline if you prefer, I don't understand why cumulative limit, why the limit of disturbance is used in one, whereas just. Disturbance is used in the other, so I don't understand that, and one last question, I promise. Is in connection with seventeen four three oh one, which is reservation of land for public. Facilities. And in C, it says, when the land is reserved for one of those things, acquisition of the reserved land may be. In consideration of density transferred from the reserved land to a budding or adjacent land under the same ownership. And there's a section in the code, which is seventeen six one oh four, which only allows a transfer of density from, in a split zoned lot from one, from. One of the zones in the split zoned lot to the other zone on the same lot. So is this intended to be an authorization to allow a transfer of density? Even though you're not split zoned and if so, shouldn't the, shouldn't, shouldn't seventeen six one oh four also be revised?
Kenley Bray, Office of Law, no, this is not intended to authorize a transfer of density for split zone properties. This is simply a mirror of language that applies in the subdivision process. This is the exact same language that applies today for reservation of lands in where a subdivision is concerned. We are just applying that to the site development process. So the limitation on transfers of development of density in split zone properties would still apply.
Thank you.
So we are at our ninety minute mark and need to take a break, are we close or? We're finishing up this bill or do we have more questions? Ms. Harris, your question. Short?
It's fairly short, I think.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I am looking at the contents of a preliminary plan under seventeen four two oh one. And it's, it's two questions that I think are probably very easy to answer, the first is why are we changing the scale? Of no smaller than one inches a hundred feet to one inches sixty feet, I'm just curious what that point, what that reason is. And then why are we taking out? It used to say the preliminary plan shall show an initial location of development, including roads, buildings, parking, stormwater management utilities, enforced conservation. And shall provide any other information required by planning and zoning, why are we taking out that list of things that they must show, it seems like we would want those on there?
I'll attempt to answer part of, and then of course Courtney can answer the other, Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. We find that often the checklists. May need to include something that wasn't added, perhaps something was still located. That wasn't on the list, so this provides planning and zoning the discretion to have a checklist as opposed to. Having to amend the code every time something is discovered, so it kind of gives us a more. Inclusive lists to provide to developers to submit the appropriate site plans, that's what I believe it does, but Courtney can. Probably answer it better than me, if she's still here.
Sure, Courtney Wilson, Office of Planning and Zoning. That's correct, right now, the code already refers to checklists and so we're just removing some redundant language, our checklist. Clearly require all of these elements, so we're just going to take that out to clean it up a bit. And you asked about the scale. The applicants have the option of testing, investing adequacy of public facilities with either the preliminary plan or the site development plan. At a hundred scale, it is very difficult for us to read the plans, so we're asking that they provide something of a larger scale.
Both of those make sense, thank you very much.
Thank you, we're going to at this time take a ten-minute recess, which means we will come back at. Let's just say ten fifty, so if everyone can be back at ten fifty to resume the work session, thank you.
See if we can get everybody back. It is now 10:50, but we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to show their face.
Madam Chair, just let me know when you'd like me to call the roll.
Thank you for the reminder. Madam Secretary, how about we go ahead and call the roll and see if everybody works up?
Okay, and Madam Chair, Mr. Volkey had to leave the meeting. He will not be returning.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Kruisky is absent. Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Okay, Madam Chairman, we have five council members present.
Thank you. Were we... Do we have any more questions regarding Bill 8620? Ms. Hare, Mr. Barron is hopefully here somewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we just note for a second that as all the ladies who are here doing the hard work and the two gentlemen have excused themselves from the work session?
Always the case.
I support that, Madam Chair and Councilwoman. Okay, I'm on page six of the bill under the review county report developer resubmital paragraph, and the question I have is just with respect to the words through its reviewing agencies. It's my understanding now that planning and zoning collects comments from each of the reviewing agencies and provides them in one package to a person who submitted a plan. My reading of adding these words that they're providing this report through the county's reviewing agencies now suggests to me like the person submitting the plan is going to get different reports from different agencies. Am I just misunderstanding that?
Kinley Bray, Office of Law. I think if you read that with the accompanying language in the beginning of C, it says that the Office of Planning and Zoning will be providing that report. But it does indicate that other agencies may be commenting. Courtney Wilson or Lori Rose can comment on the procedure there, but it is still the intent that the Office of Planning and Zoning will be delivering those comments.
Hi, Courtney Wilson, Office of Planning and Zoning. That is correct. What we've done here is...
Can other people hear Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson, we've lost you.
Is mirrored the current site development plan. The... I'm sorry, what?
We lost you for a minute and then you caught up, so can you...
In my back. Yes. Where should I start? All right, I'll just start over. Right now, the preliminary plan application must either be approved or denied with the initial submittal. We have never followed that process. It's been a longstanding process of the Office of Planning and Zoning to follow the current site development plan application process by providing comment letters and allowing for resubmittals. We do that because the applicants generally opt to test for adequacy of public facilities with the preliminary plan. Can anybody hear me?
Nope. We can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, great. You were all frozen. So what we're doing here is we're mirroring the site development plan application process. It is not a new process. We have always followed the same exact process for preliminary plans. We just want to make sure that the code reflects what we're doing. That's it.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I just wanted to make sure that they're still getting... Everything's still coming through planning and zoning. I couldn't tell if we were somehow now separating it out, so that was really helpful. Madam Chair, I do have one more question unless anyone wants to jump in.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In paragraph E, action on the application, it looks like it's an entirely new paragraph. And it just says that any time after they file the application essentially you can approve or deny it. I'm trying to understand, since you just mentioned that we're trying to follow same site development process with comments and whatnot, the at any time sort of caught me off guard. So can you... I suppose theoretically you could deny something off the bat without giving comments? Or is... Does this somehow work in tandem with another paragraph that I'm not seeing that requires some back and forth first? Again, I'm just kind of getting at the whole, I think we want a process by which planning and zoning and anyone who submits something to planning and zoning are trying to work together to sort of find an appropriate, you know, sustainable type of product.
Well, I think C above covers the comment and response times, which means we're going to be providing them with comments. And this E is also found in the site development plan section of the code for processing. And that just means that during the application process, if we find that the submittal is not adequate or sufficient for any reason, we can deny it.
But the intent is that you would...
There's still going to be that.
Excuse me, I apologize for interrupting. Courtney, it's important that you state your name whenever you speak for people who are only listening.
Okay.
Jessica Hare, District Seven. So Ms. Wilson, but it's my understanding that paragraph E is supposed to apply after the process in paragraph C has been followed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Courtney Wilson.
Kinley Bray, Office of Law. I'd like to just dump in there in response to Councilwoman Harris' question. The language there at any time is really meant to reflect language that's already in the code with respect to the subdivision process and the ability to deny and otherwise the application shall be approved, but we... The intent is to... Under the old code. This would give the Office of Planning and Zoning the ability to deny those in the event that they're truly non-responsive, but that's a rare case.
Jessica Hare, District Seven. Thank you very much.
We have any other questions regarding Bill 8620? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move ahead to Bill 8720. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This is a very small bill adding one word training to an area of the code. Just for a little background, commercial kennels are a special exception in R.A., R.L.D., and R1. The requirements are that the facility shall be located on a lot of at least three acres. Building enclosures and runs for the housing of shelter of animals shall be located at least 100 feet from any residentially zoned property, and no animal may be housed within this setback. And that the use may not be noxious, offensive, or otherwise objectionable to surrounding residential uses. This was brought to me by a constituent who has a very reputable dog training business and has a very large residential property and was going through the process of opening a kennel that would really be for holding primarily dogs overnight for intensive behavioral training, or if they were in a program that was making them become aid dogs or used in the court system that need a little more training than a normal obedience program. She hit a snag because there is a word missing out of our code, and that word is training. So this bill would allow the use of a training facility to be used in conjunction with a commercial kennel that is already allowed by special exception. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions, or would the administration like to comment on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. I'm just going to turn off my video. I'm having a lot of internet problems, so hopefully that will help. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Say from OPZ and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. The Administration supports this bill as the new owner of a puppy. I think I might need to find out who this constituent is. So it's a perfectly reasonable use, and we support the bill.
Okay, any questions regarding 87-20? Okay, seeing none. We will move along to Bill 88-20. Ms. Hare, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Y'all might remember that at the beginning of our term, back in, I think, the very end of 2018, we had a presentation where it was discussed sort of how we're an outlier a little bit in the number of variances that are granted in any given year and that we should really be looking for ways that the code is outdated and doesn't necessarily match current use to avoid some of these almost routine variances that end up getting granted repeatedly because of an outdated code. And so this situation is one of those. It was brought to me by a constituent. I can tell you, so this, it relates to signage for gas stations in these business areas. Currently, there's, you know, you can have one on a canopy over a group of gas pumps, and they're not allowed to exceed 12 square feet. The code change that I'm proposing would allow three signs for a maximum of 25 square feet. I can tell you that in the last handful of years, there have been at least a dozen of these variances that have come before the hearing officer, almost all of which have been granted. The reason this came to my attention is because one recently was denied. But in fact, in 2019, I think there were four or five alone. So this is sort of a problem that's coming up. And I'm just going to read a couple of excerpts from some recent variance hearings, just so that even you can see the hearing officer is even suggesting that this is a code change that should happen. So I'm reading from a 2019 case where the hearing officer says, quote, "The evidence shows that the code provisions relating to canopy signs may be outdated. This leads to a conclusion that the code may need to be amended. However, the Office of Administrative Hearings is not given the authority by the code to amend the code. Amending the code is limited to the county council." So there's one section there where they suggest that it needs to be addressed. And then in a different, separate case from 2019, you know, it's here that it says, if the hearing officer states, if the argument being made is that signage allowed by codes insufficient for all modern automobile gasoline station, OPZ opines that shortfalls in the code should be addressed legislatively rather than property by property via individual vacancies. And so I think this is something that's ripe for the council to consider. That same case did note that sort of the code is ill-equipped, I think it said. To, yes, the existing code language ill-serves the current convenience store gas station industry as exemplified by the application in this case. So there's a number of instances essentially where the hearing officer is saying, hey, county council, please take a look at this. I think, given where we are at this point, this could take away the need for so many variances in this instance, and the number of signs and the difference in square footage up above the gas station pump does not make such a material difference in, you know, in any other instance that we should really be sending people for variances for this.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. I'd like to ask Councilmember Hare, would you kindly share all the documentation that you've received so we can go over it? One of my questions is just to kind of differentiate. I want to look more into detail of why that one application was denied when so many have been approved. And one of the potential consequences that I would see flowing from the bill, you know, not without judging whether it's good or bad, but wouldn't, you know, some much larger number of gas stations across the county perhaps decide that they want to have much larger signage, and there might be some cumulative visual effect that, you know, this bill wouldn't account for necessarily in the language that you have. So, and I don't want to duplicate work that you've already done, or make our agencies duplicate work that they've already done, but if you could provide that at your earliest convenience, I think that would be really helpful in evaluating this bill and the effect of the bill.
Jessica Hare, District Seven. Absolutely. I'll send along all of those. I can tell you that in this, in the particular one I'm referring to, they granted the variance for the number of signs and then disapproved the variance for the size of the signs. And in part, that hearing officer said, well, the size difference of 25 feet to 12 feet is really not all that big, so you don't need a variance. But I will definitely send you the, I will send you the cases.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Ms. Say and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer are with me at the virtual table. The Administration has no opposition to the bill, but I do want to note that there has been a conversation, as Councilwoman Hare mentioned, for several years now, not just related to gas station signage, but the sign code in general. And it's the position of the Administration that needs a comprehensive, that the entire sign code needs a comprehensive rewrite. We generally prefer to take the whole pie, so to speak, rather than a piecemeal approach. But we also recognize that's not always practicable. So for those reasons, the Administration does not have an opposition to this particular bill. But I did want to flag that it's, the sign code is something that we do need to take a holistic look at because it is outdated, as the sponsor of this bill noted.
Are there any other questions related to Bill 8820? Okay, we will move along to Resolution Number 36-20. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm hoping my internet will hold up. Joining me at the virtual table, if they are still around, is Ms. Romans and Ms. Harris from Central Services and Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. This is Resolution 3620 approving the determination of certain unimproved county property on Old Admiral Court as surplus. The council might recall the resolution from a while back that the Administration brought forward. In the previous resolution, the auditor pointed out that we had used the less than a tenth of an acre process. The Administration was quite dismayed to learn that you don't round down. This property is .0029 acres too large to use that property. That, I used Google. It told me that that is 126 square feet. So this property was just a tiny bit too big to use the previous property or previous resolutions approach. So the Administration apologizes for that misinterpretation. The resolution brought forward before you now is under the proper process for the declaration of a surplus property that is larger than a tenth of an acre. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Barron regarding Resolution 36-20? Seeing none, we'll move right along. This is very exciting. Resolution 37-20. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. From the Department of Recreation Parks is Ms. Polito.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration from the Department of Recreation Parks is Ms. Polito and from the Office of Law is Ms. Nederer. This Resolution, Resolution 3720, is approving the application of Eleanor R. King to sell an agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. It is 67.55 acres. It is located in Davidsonville, Maryland. Current farming operation includes 62 acres of small grain rotation and five acres of woodlands. The farm contains 50% Class 1, 2, and 3 soils. The farm has a current soil and water quality conservation plan in effect. Protecting this farm from development will add to an existing 450-acre block of land within one mile, within a one-mile radius already under a preservation easement. I believe council members should have the testimony submitted by the property owners. I encourage you to take a look at those pictures. It's quite nice, and hopefully the council will approve this resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the administration about Resolution 37-20? Okay, seeing none. We will conclude with a conversation about Bill Number 69-20. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. After the meeting last week, I had a few more questions from constituents and I was hoping perhaps Ms. Rhodes might be able to help address just kind of one or two questions here. We had this conversation on accessory use a little bit, and I'm trying to understand what Planning and Zoning would look to to determine whether a use under 6920 would be accessory or not. Is it acres of farming? Is it dollars generated? What is it that Planning and Zoning is considering when making that determination?
Quinn or Madam Chair?
Mr. Barron?
Thank you. Pete Barron with the administration. That's a great question, Councilwoman. Unfortunately, we weren't told of the need to, that this issue would be discussed until late yesterday. I am not sure if folks were able to rearrange their schedule to be here. I'd be happy to take that question back and get you an answer, and we'll have it for you at the, at the next meeting. And we, we are planning on having everybody present at the meeting, but unfortunately, the, this wasn't raised until, I think, four o'clock yesterday when, when the request came in. So unsure that we were able to rearrange everybody's busy schedules.
Okay, thank you. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I have one other question then that maybe you could take back with you. And it's a question about sort of setbacks with respect to the farm stays. Was there any consideration? Was there a discussion at all in terms of shielding neighbors and things like that? We often have setbacks. We had a lot of discussion about setbacks earlier today. Was there any consideration to making a setback requirement for some of these farm stays so that you are a certain distance from your neighbor if you are having, I don't know whether it's tents or, or the renovated air streams or whatever else we might be thinking. And if so, what was the result of that conversation?
And that's specific to the temporary use because of my understanding of the bill and, and the special exception, there is screening in the bill. Am I wrong?
You're correct, but I'm referring to the farm stays.
Farm stays, okay. I'm unsure if that was a point of discussion as the Agro Tourism Commission was crafting the legislation, but I'll take that question back and we'll be prepared to answer it on the 19th.
Okay, perfect. If you happened to get it earlier than that, I would love it just in case of potential amendments or things like that, but that was all I had. So I thank you to the chair for adding this to the schedule for today.
Absolutely, and I'll, and I'll reach out to you and maybe we can set up a call with Ms. Rhodes and anybody else from the administration before Monday.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Somehow we've managed to get through a lengthy agenda. I appreciate everybody's diligence today. We will be back in session Monday, October 19th at 6:00 PM virtually. Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.